I'd like to call us to order for the October 14th regularly scheduled meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board at Sports Services Center, Room 2, 2575 Commercial Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we have Gabriela Ramos from North Salem High School ROTC to lead us.
Ladies and gentlemen, will you help me present the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Kristi, can you call the roll?
Rick Kimball is absent this evening. Nancy McMorris-Addix here. Chris Brantley.
Here.
Jeff Faville.
Here.
Jim Green.
Here.
Paul Kylo.
Here.
Chuck Lee.
Here.
Are there -- there are no agenda modifications. So the first thing on our agenda is the Spotlight on Success.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to begin with the Volunteer of the Month, and if Karina Lee, our Executive Director of Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, would please present the award.
Once again, I am so honored to be part of a community's tribute to the capital, human capital of our community. The Volunteer of the Month this year is, and I want to do this justice because it's a beautiful, beautiful name, LeKias Hoffini. I'd like to ask LeKias and the Swigle Principal, Karina Valencia Chavez, and the Swigle Community School Outreach Coordinator, Lisa Everett, to please join up front. There you are. And the fan club has arrived as well. The Swigle Elementary School staff has nominated our selected Volunteer of the Month, LeKias Hoffini. LeKias started volunteering his time as a mentor and soccer coach at Swigle Elementary five years ago. LeKias started a free after-school soccer program at Swigle, which has now grown to five Salem Kaiser schools. LeKias spends every single one of his weekday afternoons either at Swigle, Chavez, Scott, Auburn, or Washington Elementary Schools. In addition to his busy soccer schedule, he mentors students at Swigle on his lunchtime. LeKias is also a full-time student at Corbin University studying exercise science. Through his soccer program, he has brought the communities of Swigle, Chavez, Auburn, Four Corners, and Washington Elementary Schools together. He holds soccer tournaments for all of our schools on the weekends. All schools engage in some friendly competition, and one school gets to take a trophy home every single time. He has taught the students to not only be respectful and responsible, but more importantly, he has taught staff and parents how to come together as a community. LeKias' work has not gone unnoticed, and the Swigle staff feels they are beyond blessed -- that's their words, beyond blessed -- to have such an amazing volunteer in their school. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have the same fan club for your award here, Mr. Reamy? Business Partner of the Month.
I will do my best.
Okay.
Okay, so if we could get Micah Jantsch to please join the Chair and the Superintendent. Good evening, Superintendent Perry and Chair McMorris-Addix and members of the board. Our Business Partner of the Month is Chipotle Mexican Grill. Micah Jantsch is General Manager. Chipotle Mexican Grill is -- was nominated by McKay High School. McKay High School holds their Taking Care of Business Day for two days in mid-August each year. This event provides an opportunity for incoming freshmen and students already enrolled in the other grades to register for classes. For the past five years, Chipotle has donated dinner to the 20 to 30 staff members who worked and the approximately 10 student leaders who volunteered on these two days. Chipotle Mexican Grill has provided dinner on both nights after the event. McKay High School staff and students would like to thank you for your support of their school and your community. So congratulations to Chipotle Mexican Grill as our Business Partner of the Month for October. Thank you.
Our next Spotlight on Success is a student, and Kelly Carlyle will present this.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Chair McMorris-Addix, and members of the board. I would like to invite Gabriela Ramos back up for our Spotlight on Success, and she's here with Colonel Dwight Morse, First Sergeant Jim Wagner, who just got here from football practice. Thank you, Coach Wagner, and Principal Cynthia Richardson from North Salem High School. In August, the Legion of Valor of the United States announced that North Salem High School JROTC Cadet Gabriela Ramos was selected to receive its Bronze Cross for Achievement. The Legion presents the award annually to cadets who demonstrate a combination of outstanding scholarship, superior leadership in ROTC, the school, the community, and exceptional citizenship and character. This is the third consecutive year that one of North's cadets has received this award. Gabby is the 10th North Salem Cadet to receive this honor since 2000. Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Gabriela Ramos is the Commander of North Salem High School's JROTC Viking Battalion and a member of North Salem's class of 2014. She ranks first in her class in JROTC Studies with a cumulative GPA of 4.0. She has earned a cumulative grade point average of 3.73 in all subjects while taking a demanding load of honors, advanced placement, and college preparatory classes. Gabby ranks first in her JROTC class in the area of military leadership. She sets high standards for her subordinates and fellow cadet leaders. Gabby is also the captain of the North Salem Girls Soccer Team for the second year, the Student Body Vice President, and senior member and former commander of the North Salem JROTC Physical Fitness Team. Congratulations, Gabby, on receiving this well-deserved award.
Holy cow. All right. Our next spotlight will be presented by Ruth Galbrick.
I'd like to bring up Jessica Minahan and her past supervisor, Eric Richards, Coordinator, and present supervisor, Steve Woodcock, Coordinator. Superintendent Perry, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dental Health Solutions Coordinator, Jessica Minahan, was recognized by the Oregon Oral Health Coalition with the Oregon Health Champion Award at their Fall Conference held in Salem on October 3rd. The award is in recognition of work to elevate the importance of oral health and improve oral health access and outcome for all Oregonians. Since the program began in 2001 under her leadership, local dental community has donated $1.7 million in services to Salem Kaiser students to help them be free of pain so they can focus on learning in school. In the last four years alone, 50,000 students have received dental screenings and needed care. Jessica was chosen for extensive effort and dedicated work for ensuring access to dental care among school-aged children, and the Operations and Communications Manager for the Oregon Health Coalition, Phil Giles, said, quote, "It is the opinion of the Board of Directors that the Salem Kaiser School-based healthcare system is among the best in the entire state of Oregon. It is hands-down the best school-based health system when addressing dental problems." And thank you. Congratulations to Jessica, who's accompanied tonight by her mother and her daughter, Rebecca and Abby, way in the back, proud of them. Yeah. Thank you.
Our next Spotlight on Success will be presented by Mike Wolf.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like Susan Dodd to come forward. Susan is our Director of Financial Services, and tonight we have a couple of awards. So Susan and her staff were notified that they've received awards for the district's annual comprehensive financial report. The Governmental Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded Financial Services an Award of Financial Reporting Achievement, and the Association of School Business Officials International has awarded them with a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. These two awards are in recognition of outstanding governmental accounting and financial reporting and demonstrate the department's commitment to excellence in financial accountability and transparency. While these awards have become annual occurrences since 1987 -- that's 27 years of consecutive awards, by the way -- they represent a significant accomplishment by the staff of Financial Services, and we are grateful for your ongoing dedication on behalf of the district. Congratulations to you and your staff, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Our next Spotlight on Success is for our Communications Department. If I could have Brian Anderson, Aaron Harada, Karma Kraus, Katie Wallace, and Jay Reamy forward, please. Yay. Who takes the picture? Oh, okay, I get it now. The National School Public Relations Association awarded honors to the Community Relations and Communication Department staff, Brian, Aaron, Karma, Katie, and Director Jay. The honors were officially presented at the NSPRA's National Seminar held in July. Judges select winners from a field of exemplary public relation programs throughout the United States and Canada. The staff received a Golden Achievement Award, which recognizes exemplary work in all aspects of school public relations, communications, marketing engagement, for the Our Vision Student Video Contest, and an honorable mention for the Central Stores in a Minute video. The NSPRA Golden Medallion Award Program is the only national awards competition that specifically recognizes comprehensive strategic school public relations programs. Congratulations and thank you for the work that you do.
The next thing on our agenda is audience communication. We have two people signed up. These are agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you have any materials, give them to the board assistant, and the first person to sign up is Kathleen Sundell.
Good evening, Chair McMorris-Addix, Superintendent Perry, and Directors. I'm addressing -- oh, first, Kathleen Sundell, 5970 Poppy Hill Street, Southeast Salem. I'm addressing the board tonight regarding executive limitation for Number 3C, include adequate job descriptions for all staff positions, and include an effective personal performance evaluation system. Tonight I'm addressing only the licensed staff. As President of Salem Kaiser Education Association, SKA, and the district have worked together to write new licensed job descriptions and create a new evaluation system, especially rubric since 2010. The rubric includes the standards and indicators that the educators are evaluated on. The job description and evaluation system have truly been created by staff doing those jobs. I'd like to share a few fun facts with you tonight. Since 2010, we have created a general licensed teacher job description and rubric, 14 specialty job descriptions and rubrics. Additionally, we adjusted parts of three other rubrics. We -- close to 100 licensed staff, 20 administrators, and one school board member have worked on this, Mr. Brantley. We continue to see feedback every year as to how the rubrics and systems are working, and we make adjustments accordingly. Our evaluations continue to be sought after by many in the state. I just want to take a chance tonight to thank the district for allowing me to lead this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next person to sign up is Pete Teller.
Good evening, Chair McMorris, Superintendent Perry, and board. My name's Pete Teller, 3875 Third Avenue North, 97303. I'm here to speak in behalf of Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week that'll be coming up next week. Hope you all have your packets that have your Purple Hands pledge sheet in it, a copy of the prepared comments tonight, brochure, and a pin that I hope that you all will choose to wear proudly. The month of October has garnered multiple designations that include National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, LGBT History Month, and Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. Bridging these admirable efforts for the past 17 years has been the National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week that is proud to be embarking on its 17th annual observance during the week of October 19th to the 25th. The National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week has been a stalwart effort intended to interrupt the patterns of violence and abuse that exist in the world with patterns that promote universal respect and equality. Recognizing that each person in every community has the moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence, the project has invited everyone to be part of the simple solution wrapped up in the 14-word Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting pledge that says, "I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others." The Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting pledge teaches empathy, self-control, and accountability for our words and actions that sets the standards for safety and respect for self and others. We continue this vital work because we have had thousands of testimonials from children and adults telling us that it is making a positive difference in their homes, schools, and communities that now spans all 50 states and 15 countries worldwide. Sorry to say, but no part of society is immune to violence or abuse. Violence or abuse does not respect a person's job title, position, or professional prestige. Violence and abuse is present in every aspect of our social connectedness and requires that we all use our collective voice to promise not to hurt ourselves or each other. The Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project recognizes that unless every person makes a deliberate choice to develop healthy relationships based on respect and equality and put an end to the misguided use of deadly force and violence, then our aspirations for a more peaceful and just world will never fully be realized. We must all commit to preventing the unnecessary loss of life, for we all are valuable, irreplaceable human beings. 2014 has added a new designation to the Registry of October Events that now includes the soon-to-be iconic reference Ferguson October. The weekend of October 10th brought together thousands of concerned individuals in the town of Ferguson, Missouri, who voiced their desire for a more just and equitable world. The chorus of names that include Michael Brown, Oscar Grant, Trayvon Martin, Aaron Campbell, Jordan Davis, Renisha McBride, and so many more is a refrain that is deeply painful and profoundly tragic. The 17th Annual National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week gives us pause to reflect on our personal contribution to the cause of peaceful coexistence and the healing of injuries and damages done to those who are victims of an unjust world. Our youngest ever Nobel Peace Laureate, Peace Prize Laureate, 17-year-old Bilala Yusufzai, said in her acceptance speech, "It does not matter what's the color of your skin, what language you speak, what religion you believe in. It is that we should all consider each other as human beings, and we should respect each other, and we should all fight for our rights, for the rights of children, for the rights of women, and for the rights of every human being." Now more than ever during the 17th Annual National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week, we must rise up, join together, and pledge, "I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others." Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. The next on the agenda are action items, the first of which is the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting proclamation. Each year, we -- the school board votes on this proclamation to make a statement that bullying is not something that we would condone in any way in our buildings. I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll entertain a motion. Whereas a world without abuse and violence is a dream we all share, and whereas we acknowledge that any form of mistreatment of another is abuse, and whereas abuse can be in the form of verbal, mental, or physical, and often escalates to further violence, and whereas we believe that all people have the right to live free of abuse and violence, and whereas we believe that every person can make a difference in stopping abuse, including cyberbullying and violence, by not using violence to control others, and by not tolerating any form of abuse from others, and by developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances based on respect and equality, and whereas we recognize and support the efforts of district staff and our community in promoting respect and equality for all people, teaching conflict resolution behaviors, and helping students learn how to stop abusive cycles, and whereas we recognize the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project's pledge is an effective tool to an abuse and violence prevention education. And now therefore, the Board of Directors of the Salem Kaiser School District 24J proclaims October 19th through 25th, 2014, to be the 17th Annual National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week in the Salem Kaiser School District. We call upon our community to observe October 19th to 25th, 2014, as the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week, and to encourage everyone in the community to take the pledge. I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others. Is there a motion?
Move adoption of the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is the appointment of members to the Citizens Budget Committee. The Budget Committee is a 14-member group consisting of the school board and seven appointed citizen volunteers. It is an advisory group established by statute to make budgetary recommendations to the school board. The Budget Committee typically serves three-year terms and may apply for additional service once their appointed term expires. Members need to be qualified registered voters. They cannot be officers, agents, or employees of the district. They must reside within the Salem Kaiser School District. As terms expire, we appoint to vacant positions. This year, we have five open positions. One is for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2015. One is for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2016, and three are three-year terms ending June 30th, 2017. We received eight applicants for the positions. One of those applicants was not a registered voter, so we have seven applicants. Just for the information of the board, you have before you a ballot, and on the ballot there are -- there's a column for a three-year term, a column for a two-year term, and a column for a one-year term. And you need to vote for three in the three-year term, one in the one-year, two-year term, and one in the one-year term, and you cannot vote in the boxes that are blacked out. I would like to invite each person who is interested in the Budget Committee to come forward, and you'll have an opportunity to address the board and give your -- give us a little bit of why you're interested in that position. The first person I'd like to call forward is Lloyd Chapman.
One of the positions you're being asked to fill is mine that I began three years ago after the district was forced to lay off all, virtually all, the librarians, elementary school librarians and many others. Very difficult time, and a process that I was very frustrated with. And I decided I wanted to serve on the committee and try and make a difference on that. I still think we have a ways to go in terms of developing a process in which the community is involved and in which the Budget Committee has a real voice. It has seemed to me that the committee -- the expectation has been that the committee will accept the district's proposed budget. And the district proposes a good budget, but I think the process should be one in which the committee and the community is really asked to weigh in and to make changes as necessary. And I'm interested in working on that process and finding ways to better involve the community in this process. So, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you.
Next is Verlina Crossley.
First, let me say that I have a high commitment to education. I've been on a lifelong journey myself. I just finished my doctorate in business administration and currently work as a faculty member at Lynnfield College. So I've seen students come through the Salem Kaiser District and are very well-prepared. My own daughter went through Sprague High School, and I will be having a grandson that will soon be going to the Salem Kaiser District. In the budget area, and one of the reasons why I'm interested in serving on it, about half of my career in state government as Employment Department Director, I was Budget and Finance Manager for ODOT for a while, and I served on the Oregon Workforce Investment Board that's appointed by the governor. And so I really believe that policy and budget goes together, and I would like to be a part of the recommendations that your -- this group actually considers, and also to use my expertise in the budget arena. I've also worked with NAP, the National Association -- excuse me, Assessment Coordination for the NAP assessment, so for 4th, 8th, and 12th grade in the Salem area and Eugene area schools, both as an assessment coordinator and a supervisor for the NAP program. And lastly, I was, prior to going back to school myself, a member of the Salem Kaiser District Budget Advisory Team. It's been a while since I've been involved in some community interest areas because of my schedule, but I want to get back and volunteer my time, and this is an area that I'm very much interested in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Looks like none. Thank you. Levy Herrera Lopez. Looks like Levy's not here. Adam Kohler.
Good evening. So if you'd like to review my application, you'll see that I have two children in the Salem Kaiser School District. I'm also a newer resident to Salem, moved here about two and a half years ago, just shy of that. One of the things that stood out to me is the reputation of the school district, and to be honest with you, the poor academic achievement of the school district. I'm fortunate enough that my children are in two very good schools in South Salem, and it's my goal, through both my volunteering and through my company's influence, to make sure that the entire school district succeeds. I volunteer quite a bit of my time. I'm very passionate about the educational performance of our community and of our citizens, our students, our children, because I believe that that directly leads to the success of the community. Short of that, I have a lot of experience. You can see my educational background, a degree in electrical engineering and a master's in business administration. I deal with a budget from $6.9 to $7.0 million annually. We do a lot of budgeting, and we also cut a lot of budgets, so I'm very familiar with that entire process. Short of that, I'm open. If this doesn't work out, I will still be involved in the community. So, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
Looks like none. Thank you. Betty Patacoli.
I'm Betty Patacoli, and my husband and I own a local business here in the community, Red Hawk Vineyard and Winery. We -- I have been on the Budget Committee for the past three years. One year as the Vice Chair and one year as the Chair, and I would continue -- would love to continue on as part of all of this activity that has happened. As Lloyd mentioned, the first two years of my three-year term were very tough, so as things, the economy are getting better, and school budgets seem to be improving, it would be very exciting to be part of that. My background is in finance. be improving, it would be very exciting to be part of that. My background is in finance and accounting. I have an MBA. Before moving to Oregon 10 years ago, I was a financial controller at Citibank. Since then, I run the business basically here at Red Hawk. We have a son who is, started kindergarten through Salem Kaiser when we first moved here, is now a freshman at West, which is just a very exciting time for us, and I would be honored to serve again for another three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Questions? Richard Rothweiler.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board members. My name is Richard Rothweiler, and I live at 368 Lori Avenue out in South Salem, and I had spent several consecutive terms on the Budget Committee, took a brief break for three or four years so that I could focus volunteer efforts with the Sprague High School Orchestra, that I was chairman for the Parent Committee on that, which culminated last summer with taking the orchestra to London and Paris for a trip and musical excursions there. And so, now that that is completed and the, my last student, Erin graduated from Sprague last summer, those volunteer efforts are now off my plate, and I'd like to get back into the Budget Committee and the budgeting process and supporting the school district through that process. So, I'd like the Board to take a look at having me come back on to the Budget Committee, and I would be available for any of the terms that are available. So, any questions?
Looks like none. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last up, we'll have Larry Trot.
Good evening, Directors and Superintendent Perry. My name is Larry Trot. I'm here tonight to express my interest in the position on the Budget Committee. I, I have a strong interest in education. I've been on the Willamette Education Service District Board for going on eight years at this time. I'm currently the vice chair and have served two terms as the, as the chair. When approached about this, I thought, you know, it, it made a lot of sense actually for me to give back. I know members of, of this board have, have participated in the WSD budget process, and at the same time too, it makes a lot of sense for me as one of the appointed members of the WSD from Salem Kaiser to take, or to get more in-depth knowledge of the operations of Salem Kaiser, and I thought that would be, this would afford me a good opportunity to do that. So, anyway, thank you, and if you have any questions.
I don't see any.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm just gonna go again over this for the Board members. You need to place three marks in the first column, one in the second, and one in the third. Put your name on the ballot and pass it in. Paul will read the ballots and read your name as well, so that will all be public, and Mary will tally the votes.
I have a question.
Yes?
Richard, when he spoke, indicated something different than I'm seeing on the ballot. He indicated he'd be open for any of the lengths of term, and yet, apparently on his application, he only checked one of the boxes.
Just write it below.
What should we do about that?
Why don't you just add Richard's name below and add three more columns?
Okay. Just cross him off where he is.
Before Paul starts and as a couple are finishing up, I just did want to say thank you to all the candidates. It is, I think, rare in a Budget Committee process to have more candidates than members. So, if not selected, believe me, we have your names and are gonna come after you for something else, but we do really appreciate your interest in this, and I look forward to getting to know each of you, because there's a few here I have not met before. So, thank you. And what a process to get to come, to put your resume out, and then we get to vote on you in public. Kind of feels weird. All right, we're ready.
Director Brantley votes for, sorry, Director Brantley votes for Mr. Chapman for a three-year Mr. Kohler for a two-year term. Ms. Patacoli for a three-year term. Mr. Trot for a one-year term. And Mr. Rothweiler for a three-year term. Director Lee votes for Mr. Chapman for a three-year term. Ms. Crossley for a three-year term. Herrera Lopez for a two-year term. Ms. Patacoli for a three-year term. And Mr. Trout for a one-year term. Director Green votes for Mr. Chapman for a three-year term. Mr. Kohler for a two-year term. Ms. Patacoli for a three-year term. Mr. Rothweiler for a three-year term. And Mr. Trot for a two-year, pardon me, for a one-year term. Director Kylo votes for Mr. Chapman for a three-year term. Ms. Crossley for a one-year term. Herrera Lopez for a two-year term. Mr. Kohler for a three-year term. Ms. Patacoli for a three-year term. Director Fayette votes for Mr. Chapman for a...
You can just do the first one. This was if he wasn't in the first one.
You have to vote for five people.
Okay. You can just cancel the two votes. If I have to vote for them...
Okay. Mr., Director Fayette votes for Mr. Chapman for a three-year term. Mr. Kohler for a three-year term. And Ms. Patacoli for a three-year term. The confusion was, he voted for Mr. Chapman for both the two and one-year terms. So, those will be subsumed in the three-year term vote. Director McMorris Addix votes for Mr. Chapman for the three-year term. Herrera Lopez for the two-year term. Kohler for the three-year term. Ms. Patacoli for the three-year term. And Mr. Trout for the one-year term.
So, we needed four votes to be approved, so at this moment, we have Lloyd Chapman and Betty Patacoli for three-year terms, and Larry Trot for a one-year term, and I think returning to the drawing board for another vote.
You may ask it.
So, is the plan to vote for the other two members tonight or wait for?
No.
Director Kimball to come back? Okay.
So, you have a one-three-year term left and one-two-year term left. So, if you will find a piece of paper, or Christie, if you have some paper. No.
I have a half a piece of paper.
So, we're voting, Mary, could you announce that again, what we're voting for?
Yep.
And would you remind us where the black spots are?
I'll mark them up up here.
Got it.
And does that, one year is done?
Right.
So, we need a three-year and a two-year. Three-year and a two-year. They're voting for two.
They're voting for one in year three, for a three-year term, and one in a two-year term. Of the, of the four that are left. And you do need to sign your ballots.
Are we giving them to Paul, or are we giving them to...
No, Paul doesn't want them, apparently.
I'm passing them down.
Do we have checks?
Not yet. He's, he's giving it a deep thought on that. Okay. Director Fayette votes for Mr. Kohler for the three-year term and Mr. Rothweiler for the two-year term. Chair McMorris Addix votes for Herrera Lopez for the two-year term and Ms. Crossley for the three-year term. Director Lee votes for Ms. Crossley for the three-year term and Herrera Lopez for the two-year term. Director Green votes for Mr. Rothweiler for the three-year term and Mr. Kohler for the two-year term. Director Kylo votes for Mr. Kohler for the three-year term and Herrera Lopez for the two-year term. And Director Brantley votes for Mr. Kohler for the three-year term and Herrera Lopez for the two-year term.
Okay, we're almost there. So, Mr. Herrera Lopez has four votes for two years. We still need one member for the three-year term, so you're gonna go again.
It's a great problem to have. Great problem to have.
So, you're only voting for one now. We're narrowing it down.
Opened and read out loud.
Spread out. Yeah.
Okay, I'll put Lee on there. Is that Crossley? Yes. Director Lee casts his ballot for Mr., Mr., or for Crossley, okay. Director Kylo for Crossley. Director Green for Rothweiler. Chair McMorris Addix for Crossley. Director Brantley for Mr. Kohler. And Director Fayette for Kohler.
We didn't do it.
Now, we're all gonna switch our votes, and it'll end up the same.
Just keep at this.
I have a procedural question for our, could someone make a motion and take a vote that way? It's up to you if you want to keep voting, or someone could make a motion.
Whether you want to vote on paper or, oh, orally.
Let's do it paper one more time, just to see what...
Okay, it's paper one more time.
Just see what...
Nobody gave me paper. How pathetic did that sound?
Director Brantley votes for Crossley. Director Fayette for Kohler. Director Green for Rothweiler. Director Kylo for Rothweiler. And Director Lee for Crossley.
We did it again.
So, Madam Chair, I would move that the Salem Kaiser Board hold the vote next month for the final position on the Budget Committee, when we can have Director Kimball here to break our tie. We don't need to appoint really tonight for the Budget Committee, and I'll need a second for that.
It's been moved and seconded that we table this vote until next month, when we have everyone here. I will not be here next month. Just thought I'd throw that out.
We do have a work session on the 28th. We could do a short business meeting with one action item?
Then, then I would amend my motion to make it till the 28th at our next work session.
It's agreeable with the second.
Great. Is there any discussion about the motion? Jim?
I, I just want to echo what Superintendent Perry has said. This is a terrific problem to have. I know when I first looked to be on the Budget Committee, I think I was the only one who signed up for that position, and I really appreciate everybody in the community and all three of these candidates who are willing to serve three years on a Budget Committee after having gone through what this district has gone through in the last 10 years. So, I appreciate all three of the candidates, all of the candidates that put their name in, but I think it would probably behoove this Board to wait until we have everybody present to hold that vote.
And Chuck?
I would like to echo Director Green's comments. I've been on the school board now. I believe this is my eighth year, and we've been through this process many times. We have never had such a high quality of applicants, and so, you know, as I was sitting here looking at the, well, somebody's gonna be a loser here. It's just not fair, because we, all three of the people who are left would be outstanding, but to carry that one step further, I think everybody that's put their name in the hat this time is very, very deserving, and I, for one, am very grateful for the outstanding quality of applicants we had this time. So, sorry we couldn't come to a decision tonight, but I think that speaks highly too for the quality of the field. quality of the field, so.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, on the 28th of October at our work session, we'll have a short business meeting to address this issue. And I would like to echo what's been said, you know, thank you so much for putting your names in and really great problem to have. You would have all been great.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to add, for those of us who have been involved in campaigns, I'm looking forward to the campaigning that's gonna happen, television time and brochures and robo-calls.
The robo-calls especially.
Those are really illegal.
Great, next thing on our agenda is the adoption of the consent calendar. We usually take these as a group. The two items are the adoption appropriation of grant budgets and personnel actions. Jim?
I'd like to pull two of the grant items, I just have a couple of questions regarding them from the consent agenda, other than that, I'm fine with the consent agenda as presented, I just have two questions on two of the grants.
So, it sounds like we will, does anyone else need to pull anything? So, we'll take a motion to accept the personnel actions and then we'll separately do the adoption appropriation of grant budgets.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Personnel Actions Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Jim?
So, on the grant question, if Superintendent Perry could answer the question, on the second page, it's Grant G-15-X4, the TIF grants from the Chalkboard Project and the teacher and the other TIF grant from the Chalkboard Project. I have two questions. One, if I remember correctly, these require sign-off from our local association, is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
And what do they use as measurement of these grants? For success on these grants, what are they looking for?
What are they looking for for success on the grants? Ken?
Director Green, there's two payouts in the TIF, the Teacher Incentive Fund Grant. One is based on school VAM data or value-added measure.
Okay.
And then there's a evaluation performance factor also. So someone could earn a evaluation incentive, and then also it's based on school VAM measure.
Okay.
VAM is achievement data.
Correct, and so, value-added measure, there's a rubric, and 50% VAM would be average student achievement compared to other schools with similar students. And schools who elevate student achievement to a higher level than that, there's a graduated scale where some incentives can be paid to staff who are evaluated at a high level of performance.
Thank you.
And to confirm, there was association sign-off?
Yeah, absolutely, and our association's been a key partner in this work, with the teacher incentive program. It's much of the work that Kathleen described so well earlier, the TIF grant has helped us do much of that work.
Great, thank you.
So is there a motion to adopt?
A move of adoption of the grant? Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adoption and accepting the report on adoption and appropriation of grant budgets? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no readings tonight, the next thing on the agenda is the Monitoring Report Executive Limitation Number Four, Relationships with Staff and Volunteers. Superintendent Perry?
This is the fourth of 12 monitoring reports scheduled for this year and is designed to provide the School Board with information to determine if the superintendent is meeting the criteria established within the executive limitations policy. So this one is the relationship with staff and volunteers, and I'm not gonna read every piece to you, but I shall not fail to make reasonable inquiries or checks prior to hiring any paid personnel or utilizing school volunteers. And as we reviewed procedures, there is no evidence of non-compliance. Section two, or number two, has failed to use a well-defined system to recruit and select the most highly qualified and best-suited candidates for the employment. We do have sound personnel procedures. We did actually in this past year accelerate a lot of our hiring timelines to really work through the teacher shortage, so I think that's evidence of some strong policies. I'll have some recommendations at a later time regarding our strategic plan and recruiting and retention, but for the look back to last year, we're well in compliance. Number three, failed to operate without written personnel policies. We do have all our written personnel policies in place. We've done some double-checking to be sure that all of our website is up to date with our Legends work and our job descriptions. And one of my commitments during this first year is I'll do some cross-checking on these items to be sure that I feel like they're in compliance. Then we go to, so there's no evidence of non-compliance in that area. Number four, failed to protect confidential information and personnel matters. Again, we have well-defined procedures and procedures in place if a confidentiality breach would happen, so there is no non-compliance. Number five, failed to establish policies and procedure to ensure an organizational culture that conforms to the following operations, and I think this one's really important to read actually. Open, honest, and effective communication and all written and interpersonal interactions, respect for others and their opinions, focus on common organizational goals, are expressed in results policies established by the Board, appropriate confidentiality, and commitment to the integrity and positive image of the district, its leaders and its staff. I do have started my regular meetings with our Communications Group, we have our PACE Group starting with the next month. We've done some pre-planning, the district leadership on PACE and ISO, both associations, including and our Administrative Association have done some pre-planning as we look forward to PACE, and so we're really working to be sure that we have that really regular and ongoing communication. And that's how we help to ensure that our policies are being implemented correctly. So there was no evidence of non-compliance of that. Failed to honor the terms of negotiated agreements. There have been a couple grievances in the last years, but no evidence of real non-compliance with the policies. And failed to provide staff with an opportunity to become familiar with the provisions of this policy. And again, no areas of non-compliance. Do you have questions about this report?
I do. I see that you have all of these various mechanisms for people to file complaints. Are they, and how many would they be filing? You mentioned that there were a couple grievances, but I would expect that in an organization this size, what about complaints?
Right, so I'm gonna direct that to Assistant Superintendent Partial to answer that question. So if you wanna start with the grievances?
Sure, thanks for the question, Director Kylo. Last year in the 13-14 school year, we had a total of eight grievances between the two associations. Seven of those were resolved, and then we have one that's unresolved right now or in an open process still. And while the question wasn't about the qualm process, I'd like to also offer that we had, since January of 2014 last year, we had 29 submissions of corrective actions which are about processes and procedures in the districts, in the district, excuse me, and 23 of those have been resolved, and we have six of those that are still in process. So we have a process in the district where any employee can make a suggestion or share a concern about a process that triggers a mechanism where that department comes together and studies that problem, very healthy process in an organization. Thanks for those questions.
Jim?
It's just more of a comment, and I think it underscores what Kathleen said earlier to us, but I get the opportunity to work with a lot of districts across the state on the implementation of Senate Bill 290, and our district is consistently held up as one of the models that school districts should take a look at. I think there were three models put out, one of which was Salem Kaiser's that the state put forward. So, the work that Kathleen's Association, our staff, and all the Board and everybody that was involved in that, the work that went into that was not easy work, because we changed our entire evaluations of licensed educators in this state, but the work that was done here has been held up statewide as something that other districts ought to implement, look at, use, utilize, beg, borrow, and steal from. So, I think it's a really good high mark for our district when other districts and the state is saying, you need to take a look at what Salem Kaiser's doing. So, for all the work that was done by everybody on that, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I have a comment, I just wonder, we've been talking about Legends and the work of the class project since I came on the Board, and I'm, I would love it if we could see an example of this tool that's being used that we've been talking about for six years, like a, something I could understand, like an elementary school teacher maybe, something like that would be great.
Alright, we'll bring that back in to Board Leadership in some sort of a format.
So, these executive limitation reports are part of the evaluation of the superintendent. We usually give a thumbs up or thumbs down, looks to me like we have consensus with thumbs up today. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is a report on the strategic plan, continue the systemic use of data to inform the development and implementation of differentiated instruction, planned interventions, and supports for students. Superintendent Perry?
I'm gonna pass it to Assistant Superintendent Nor.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Members of the Board, good evening. It is my pleasure to provide you a report this evening on the strategic plan goal number one, which is the systematic use of data in our classrooms and schools. And I also wanna mention that the Board received a written report in your packet, so I'm gonna provide you a summary that highlights some of the work that we're doing in that area. Just by way of background, over the last five years, we've given you reports on the strategic plan goal, and our focus has been on what data to use, how to organize the data, how to store the data, we gave you presentations on the data warehouse, and then we started to talk about access. How do teachers and administrators access the data in a very convenient and easy and meaningful way? As a result of that, we've developed a data culture in our schools and classrooms, and I think as you go around the district, people will tell you that data is our friend, so, especially Trekkies will tell you that. So I think we have, we've developed great capacity in terms of how we use the information, how we use data to inform our work, how we use that information in a meaningful way, and how we use it to support our students first and foremost. If you go, if you travel around the district, the most glaring evidence of that is the PLC process that we have in place, our professional learning communities, is the structure that brings all of that to bear. So, to just give you a quick background about PLCs and the process that's associated with PLCs, they really revolve around four key questions, and that is, what do we want students to learn and know and be able to do? How will we know that students are learning? What effective strategies are we putting in place to make sure that they are learning? And then how do we respond when we have students that are struggling in the strategies and the standards and the learning that's going on? And how we respond to students that excel, our high flyers? So, we wanna provide interventions to support those students that struggle, and we wanna stretch and grow those students that master the standards and demonstrate proficiency right away. So this is really the process that typically takes place in a PLC relative to the inquiry. You know, we have standards, and I'll share with you an example, and there are lots of words on this slide, so you don't have to read them all, but essentially if you have a group of fourth grade teachers that come together as a PLC, or seventh grade math teachers that come together as a PLC, or eighth grade math teachers, or high school science teachers, and they design a unit that they want to deliver together as part of their PLC based on the Common Core State Standards. One of the first things that they have to agree on is what knowledge and skills do we want students to learn? So through a process, through a collaborative process, they agree on those knowledge and skills, and they're embedded in the standards. They also engage in conversations about how long should this unit be? Should it be a two-day unit, a week unit? What kinds of assessments are we gonna use to know that the students are actually learning the standards? What type of evidence should we gather? We're fortunate to have a framework that provides for that. We have a formative assessment system where the teachers can come together, design short, quick assessments, they can agree when to give those assessments, they can agree how to measure student learning and progress, and also they can agree on the interventions. So the next time they meet after they deliver this unit, they can make adjustments relative to the pacing, they can make adjustments relative to the strategies, they have opportunities to talk with one another about what worked and what didn't work, why did it work with one group of students and it didn't work with another. So it's a very rich, engaging, and meaningful process for our teachers, and it's a great form of professional development. Teachers are working together, they're learning from each other, and the focus is on students and students' learning. I wanted to give you an example of how that actually works, so cross your fingers that the video is gonna work.
So, last week, we talked about this new standard behind us, compare unit fractions and specify the whole by reasoning by size, and went through a deconstructive, and then Melissa found that we didn't need to do a lesson, and so we were starting, we started with this one right here, the compare, compare two fractions with the same numerator or the same denominator. And then we also wanted the students, and then we said, well, that was easy enough, and then we wanted the students to record the results of comparisons with the symbols greater than or less than. So, our pre-assessment was based on those two mini sub-standards, comparing the two fractions and recording the results, using a four-square actually in the application of a four-square. And are we ready to look at the results?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a total of 32, and 32 is 64 kids. So you have 25 out of 64 proficient.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine percent.
Let's go ahead and talk about what we saw on the assessment, and what we, I think we all launched the first round of instruction the same. So the-
That was an elementary team, this is a high school team going through the same process.
I will say that my students did very well with the multiple choice questions, which are the level two. Where they had trouble was in explaining how things were evidence of evolution. So, in number 11C where it says, how are DNA sequences used as evidence for evolution? They could say that DNA is used to compare species, but they weren't really able to say if there's more similarities, then two species are more closely related, if there's more differences.
I, my guess is a little bit different because I have corners, I, one of the multiple choice questions, actually really the only multiple choice questions that my students struggled with was the one about the fossil record. They, so the question is the physical remains of a one-living organism is known as a an, and it's supposed to be fossil, a lot of them put vestigial organ because it-
Alright, so what you heard there is a focus on students, what they're learning, the standards that they're being measured against. It's a structured process, they talked about the delivery of instruction and how their students responded to the instruction. They had assessments, some common assessments that they were looking at. That's really the essence of what a PLC is and how, and how it works. I wanted to share with you some research about PLCs, and again, lots of words on the slide, I'm sorry about that, but I'm gonna highlight a couple of things. One is the collective responsibility for student learning. So teachers come together and they share in the learning and their commitment to student success. The higher achievement levels that can be attained as a result of PLCs, the professional satisfaction that teachers are gleaning from that, the shared teaching practices allow for this to become a learning environment for teachers to grow and stretch each other and learn from one another. It leads to continuous improvement and improved instructional practices. Student achievement is really at the core of this whole process, that's what it's all about. We also noticed that it promotes teacher leadership, so teachers take turns leading a PLC, facilitating, convening, and moving that process forward. And also, I was actually excited about this notion that as a result of increased job satisfaction and engagement and leadership, the research suggests that teachers are staying longer in the profession. So it's providing them an opportunity to grow and develop. When I just touch quickly on some highlights from 13-14, what we did last year to help promote this work, a lot of it is about building capacity, building capacity in administrators, in teachers, in coaches, and the support systems that we have at the district level for our schools and for our teachers. So we provided the resource guide that walks schools step by step on how to develop and implement the PLC. The emphasis is on effective PLC, so not just having a PLC, that's the first step, but- but we actually formed an advisory committee that becomes a PLC in itself about what does an effective PLC look like. We provide them a book, they become a book study, and they take that information and they share it with their schools and with their colleagues. We have developed videos, and we're distributing those videos, and teachers are using them. The two examples, those were two separate videos of about four to five minutes each, and we collapsed them into three minutes. We're revising the interim assessments, especially in anticipation of the S-BAC assessment. Our formative and interim assessments become really, really critical because that becomes how, the way we judge whether students are ready to really take the S-BAC. So those are some of the things we did in 13, 14. For this year, we plan to continue on the same path, continue to support the priority and focus schools. That is really our number-one priority relative to PLCs because there's a direct correlation between effective PLCs and student achievement. So we're providing internal and external support to those schools relative to designing and practicing effective PLCs. We're also focusing on our coaches because they are a critical role of that instructional process, so we want to make sure that they're proficient in the PLC process so they can help teachers in implementing that as well. And also continuing to provide professional development to everybody throughout the district. But we see a lot of PLC practices, especially in our Title I schools and our focus and TOTS. The TOTS are other Title I schools that may become focus, and we're trying to help them from staying out of the focus category. So the focus really, again, is on capacity building, on professional development, continuing to deepen the work so it's more effective and more strategic and relevant to student achievement. And finally, in a nutshell, PLCs are about a culture of collective responsibility, asking the right questions, using data to answer those questions, provide time for collaboration and support, teachers supporting each other, and improving student achievement and success. So those are really the guiding principles behind any PLC that we want to see happen in our district. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes. If you go back to the previous slide, if possible, time for collaboration and support, where's that time coming from?
Well, it happens in a variety of different ways. So some, some schools use their staff time for PLC. Some teachers have some common planning time that they use as a PLC. So it could be a staff meeting, it could be, some schools have actually early release or a late start, and they dedicate some of that time for their PLC.
Good, so that, so that, thank you. That leads me to my next question. How long does a PLC meeting take on average?
I think anywhere from, it depends, anywhere from 20 to 30 minutes. Schools that have early release or late start are able to devote more time to it.
And how frequently?
Some have it once a month, some have it every week. So it just depends.
From the video, I mean, when they're discussing a specific lesson, it looked like that was close to when it, the lesson happened.
Right.
So the monthly schedule doesn't make sense to me in that context.
Well, I think they meet, as I said, they meet in their, if they have a common prep period, they use that actually sometimes as their PLC.
So they're giving up their prep time to do the PLC work?
Well, they're using it together as a PLC. They choose to come together and do that as a PLC.
And how many schools currently do we have that have the common prep times for, at the various levels? Do we know?
I don't have that information right off the top of my head.
Is it at the high school level more than at the middle, than more at the elementary?
No, I think it's across levels, but I don't know how many.
Right, right.
I'm just curious because, I mean, it makes sense to have a common planning time.
Right, right.
That's been an old, old, old practice, but it's never, I've never seen it really work anywhere, that's why I'm curious about it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, our teachers are taking it upon themselves to use their time for common planning, and some teachers have PLCs before school or after school, so before the start of the day and after dismissal as well. So it varies. I think our schools are committed to the concept and the practice, and they're finding different ways to make it work.
Okay.
In an ideal setting, we would have every school with some sort of dedicated professional learning team time. That would be ideal. That's hard because we also value instructional time.
Right.
So it's this...
Which leads me to another question. Are we getting to the point where the collecting of the data is beginning to impinge on the instruction time? So we're starting to actually, the data collection is getting in the way of actually, of actual delivery? Or are we getting close to that point?
That's a good question. I don't know if I immediately have an answer on it, but that's a good question.
That's fine, that's, I, that looks to me, there's a point where one gets in the way of the other.
Right, right, yeah. I think the goal is for it to be a resource and not to become a burden. So we have to strike that right balance. The data that the PLCs look at right now is actually student work. So it's what they typically do in their, in their regular classroom. So they bring that together. That's, the unit example that I shared really gets at that. So they agree on the lesson, the assignment, sometimes the assessment, and that's what they look at together.
And that's what made sense to me, and that's why I was trying to understand how the timing worked.
Right, right, yeah.
Thank you.
Chris?
I'll start out with a comment. When we were interviewing superintendents, we went to a number of schools and admittedly, where you go with a tour like that is to the schools where things that are being implemented are being implemented effectively. And so what we saw was, at every school, a meaningful conversation around how this kind of work is yielding results. And if any board members haven't had the opportunity to go to one of the schools where this is really working, it was really fun to go and watch this really work, and very heartening. I realize that the major part of your work now is to spread those, those centers where things are working well out into the other schools. I'm going to ask the next step question. You've presented to us over the last couple of years, a lot of what I think's really nice work, based on Dave Connolly's work around career, college and career-ready kinds of ideas. What does it mean to really be college and career-ready? And that's a different set of standards than the Common Core. There's a number of things that are evaluated in that. Do you anticipate that this district will get to the point where you are looking at those kinds of standards and developing the same kinds of assessments and the same kinds of data gathering around that kind of work as you're now doing around Common Core? Is that in the, is that in your crystal ball?
Well, I think it's, the work lends itself naturally to that, in my opinion, because we have a framework for college and career readiness, and everything is anchored in the Common Core State Standards because they're also dubbed to be college and career-ready standards. I think what you're getting at, Chris, perhaps, if I may, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the delivery of the standards. How do we deliver the instruction, and what other measurements do we use to know that the students have actually met the standards instead of just relying on a single assessment? And I think we're moving in that direction. I think we have to be mindful of how burdensome the data collection or the assessments become. But the whole notion of the Common Core State Standards is really based on the premise that these are college and career-ready standards. And the difference between them and the Oregon standards is that they're skill-based and not just knowledge-based. So there are specific skills and proficiencies that students will master as a result of going through that. And Dave Connolly's work, we use for our framework, begins to actually map that out really well in terms of cognitive skills, thinking skills, learning skills, college and career readiness skills, and what those things are. And we can begin to specify what those things are. We have a framework that actually does that.
Yeah, and I think when I looked at Connolly's work, he did a presentation at the Oregon School Board Association last year, and I went, and I saw a number of things in his work that aren't directly assessed by Common Core.
Right.
And are probably not going to be on the smarter balance test, and I'm just wondering if we're keeping cognizant of those kinds of things, too.
Yeah, yeah. Instructionally, we are, I would say. So we have the S-BAC, but we also have these other attributes, if you will, that we want students to have in terms of perseverance, being able to persist at a post-secondary level, having some specific employability skills that they can use while they're going to college or just directly into the workforce. Yes, those are part of the framework.
Those are the kinds of things that I would love to see us start to be able to assess and provide feedback to students on.
Yes, yeah.
Jim?
So with the fear of tending to agree with Paul Kylo on this one, which scares me greatly, I have a concern that I think Director Kylo also mentioned with the idea of data. And I know data's important, and we, and we look at that, but one of the things I want to make sure of, and I'm hearing that from you tonight, but I just want to make sure we're working on this and remain ever vigilant on it, is that we don't have data drive exactly what every teacher's doing in his or her classroom, because it's a profession, it's a craft. How they differentiate that instruction for the kids, because when I go into my daughter's fourth grade class, I see a continuum of kids on their level of success academically. And I don't want data to derive what we may do with a tag student, with what we may do with a student who needs additional work, and tie that teacher's hands. I want to always ensure that teachers, whether they're in the PLCs, and I think they're great, I've seen them work in schools, but I don't want to tie the hand of our professional and the craft of a teacher in knowing how to do that just because the data says this.
Right, right. I think we all share that sentiment. I think the goal is to make the data relevant. So we don't talk about data absent instruction. So the teachers determine how they want their students to meet those standards, and they either use data that we have available, or they can craft their own assessments and glean from it.
And they do that. I mean, the formative assessments that they develop on a regular basis aren't important, but I just want to make sure that we're not becoming so data-driven that we've taken the craft of teaching out of the classroom.
I think we share that. We want to maintain the art of teaching as part of our practice, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I just want to make a comment on that very piece, because what I saw when I was watching, listening to the teachers at Chavez during these tours, was teachers talking about the craft of teaching in order to get to a higher set of attainment by their kids. And so I think that this drives what you're asking for if it's done right. It also could squelch it if it was done wrong, and I think I saw it being, I saw the stuff I would hope teachers were talking about being talked about.
Yes, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Salom. Next thing on the agenda is information. You have in your board packet an upcoming school board agenda and budget committee meetings. Our next meeting is in two weeks from tonight, where we will be discussing the results policy and the data.
Data, the student achievement data from last year.
And we will also have a short business meeting to elect budget committee member. Next thing on the agenda is audience communication on non-agenda items, and we have several people signed up. I need to remind you to limit your comments to three minutes. I think Mr. DiCapolis will be timing. The yellow light will light up when you have a minute left, and the red light will light up when you have finished your three minutes. First person up is Kathleen Sundell.
This is the first for me, speaking twice in one meeting. Kathleen Sundell, 5970 Poppy Hill Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and those members of the audience that chose to wear red today. OEA is in the process of a week of action to bring forth information about public schools, and we're wearing red for public ed to show our support for public education. The second reason I'm up here is to thank someone who's leaving our staff, and that is Salom Noor. I'd like to thank Dr. Noor for all of his help with our different kinds of issues, but most of all for his continued support for parent-teacher home visits. He's been the district voice for parent-teacher home visits, and it's been very valuable for me, and I'm truly going to miss working with him. So, thank you, Mr. Noor.
Next person up is Bridget Isley.
Hi. Good job. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Perry, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Bridget Isley, and I have a master's degree in education. I taught in the David Douglas School District for six years. I'm now in nursing school, but most importantly, I'm a mom. October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. It's personal to me because my son has dyslexia. It should be personal to you because chances are, one in five of the students in the Salem Kaiser School District are also affected by dyslexia. For many years, dyslexia has not had a voice in public schools, and my hope is that's going to change. Whether the district strives for the global goal of literacy for all, or the Oregon 2020-40 goal for more students reaching higher education, the largest predictor of success remains constant. Success is predicted by achieving literacy by the third grade. This information isn't new. Every few years, there's a new strategy to get there. No Child Left Behind, Reading First, DIBELS, Common Core. But a key piece of information that continues to be ignored is dyslexia. I know what you're thinking. I know what dyslexia is. That's when kids reverse their letters or numbers. While that may be true for some students with dyslexia, it's actually much more complicated than that. Dyslexia is a specific type of learning disability that's neurological in origin. Students experiencing this form of neurodiversity struggle with traditional methods of reading instruction because the pathways, the information take in their brains is different. As teachers, we focus on these struggling readers. We give them small group instruction at their level. We provide interventions. They get extra opportunities to read with volunteers, extra practice before and after school, and we hope that the extra practice works. But sometimes, sometimes that is enough, but in many cases, the students need more than the act of practice. They need explicit systematic instruction. Research shows that interventions based on the Orton-Gillingham method are most successful for students with dyslexia. These methods include systematic, multisensory, repetitious instruction. This gives the student an opportunity for the rule, to learn the rules of reading and commit them to more effective pathways in the brain. Many things need to change in order to address dyslexia properly. Teacher education programs need to educate about dyslexia and the appropriate interventions for students with dyslexia. Salem Kaiser School District can make a commitment to acknowledging dyslexia as more than just a reading disability, provide information and training to current teachers about dyslexia, provide teachers access to the interventions and teaching strategies that most benefit the students with dyslexia, and support students with dyslexia by providing them appropriate education and learning opportunities. By assuring these changes, you're showing your commitment to do what is best for the students of our district and support the goal for literacy of all. You have made the great first step by offering dyslexia training just this past Friday at statewide in-service day. I'm excited to report that 89 teachers and staff attended. The teachers are craving information to reach these struggling readers, they want to reach the one in five, and the students deserve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bridget, is Gavin planning to come up as well? Gavin Isley?
Hi, my name is Gavin. I'm in fifth grade at Gupsor Elementary. I would like to tell you a little bit about my dyslexia. Reading is kind of hard for me. Remembering the right words for things is sometimes hard for me, too. Dyslexia makes school harder for me, sometimes is embarrassing. Here are some things I want you to know. I'm not stupid or lazy. Sometimes I need extra time to do it. It makes, it makes that me extra, it might take me extra tries to get it, but when I do it, when I do it, I, it sticks, and I remember it. I try my best, but sometimes I really get frustrated. I need to be patient with me. I like to work in a quiet room because noises can be very distracting. I may be dyslexic, but I can still shine in many other ways. I am super good at math. I, I'm good at remembering science facts, and I'm a great soccer player. I hope the Salem Kaiser School District will commit to helping people with dyslexia. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin. Next up is Karina Lee.
I don't want to follow Gavin. I'm Karina Lee. I'm the executive director of the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, located at 233 Commercial Street, northeast Salem. Today, I had the distinct honor of presenting a message at West Salem High School Memory Garden. And we talked specifically about those in our lives who help us dig deep roots, the roots that guide us through our lives as professionals and as human beings. And we also talked about giving flight those people in our lives that make sure we exercise our wings, that they take us on journeys that are great and let us be great. And today is also the last day of someone who has given us roots and wings in this district. On behalf of the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, we are here to thank you, Salam Noor. Thank you for the vision and the leadership, for the roots and the wings. And now, to your next journey that your wings will take you to. Thank you.
That's the end of the sign-up list. Is there anyone who planned to speak who didn't sign up? See? Lloyd?
I hadn't come intending to speak, and it's hard to speak after that as well, all of that. But one of the things that's always troubled me when I have been here has been to look at your strategic plan and to look at your first goal, which to me is data. Data's really important, but students and learning are more important. And I've just... It's always made me a little uneasy. So, I just ask you, in the future, to be thinking about that. Does that strategic plan speak to the values, your values, and reflect them? Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Next thing on the agenda is board report on activities. Anyone have anything to report? Jeff?
A couple of things. First thing would be just to say thank you to Salam. Appreciate your leadership and your work here. And so, not the first to say it, and probably won't be the last, but thank you. Also, I represented Salem Kaiser School District at the groundbreaking for the new career tech program and building over at Schmeckada this last week. And I was very, very happy to talk with them about their hopes and dreams, what's going on there. And they spoke well of working with Salam about trying to coordinate and work together to help the students along the continuum toward their career in technical education.
Chris?
I, too, will add my goodbye to Salam.
He's coming next meeting. I'm just going to say that.
Oh, he is. We all... Everybody's acting like he's not coming back next meeting, so... I'll save it for next meeting. The only thing I will say is that I used to serve on the Higher Education Coordinating Commission, which is where he's going. And I've already said this to him, and I'll just say it to everybody else, he's going to be a perfect fit for that job where he's going. And the people he's going to work with are just top-notch. And I'm looking forward to the great work they're going to do. I have been a long way away from Salem, Oregon, for the last month, and so I haven't actually represented us anywhere. But I did go to the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation board meeting today, which is one of my assignments on the board. And there are a couple of things coming up I just wanted to make sure you're aware of. On the 23rd and 24th of this month, there's a thing going on called the Urban Ag Fest, which is a combination of things happening around the whole idea of harvest-to-table kinds of things. And one of the big things on that will be a banquet, which can only pretend to be outstanding, given the fact that it's all about table-to-harvest-to-table kind of thing. And if you're interested in attending that banquet, go to the Salem Kaiser Education website, which is skeducationfoundation.org, and express that interest. And I will be there. I hope to see you there. The other thing is the Crystal Apple Awards coming up on November 13th, which I believe is after our next meeting, but I just wanted to remind you it's coming. And then, the thing that was probably the most exciting at the meeting today, and Karina actually said, "Don't say too much about it yet, because it's just getting going," is that the work on the Mike McLaren Center for Student Success that has been going on is really exciting kinds of stuff. And the only thing I can say at this point is stay tuned. It's going to be really pretty cool. And I hope we all can be very involved in helping them get that done.
Jim?
So, last Thursday, Paul and I attended a forum put on by Congressman Trader for school board members in his congressional district. It was pretty well-attended. It was at the Canby High School. I wish I could say that he felt there would be an air of camaraderie in Congress coming forward, but he felt that the divisiveness that's there could continue into the future. He was hopeful for the reauthorization of ESEA. And afterwards, I had an opportunity to speak with Congressman Trader, and he said he wants to do more of these throughout his district, talking to school board members about what's going on in their school districts, what are they hearing from parents? And as locally-elected officials, what can he do to empower us at the local level from the federal government and get out of the way, is the way he put it.
Great. Chuck?
This afternoon, I had the opportunity to go over to West Salem High School. And I think you're probably aware that Memory Garden that they've been working on, it's just a beautiful structure. And today, they had the dedication of that Memory Garden in honor of students who have passed away over the years. And I was very pleased that Orville Roth and his family was recognized for all the great contributions that they've made to that program. And also, Ed John. They had a lot to say about Ed and his leadership from the beginning of that school, and Ed was there, too. And I believe they've dedicated two benches, one for each one of the... For Ed, Ed John, and then another one for the Roth family for their contributions. Lot of resources from the community went in to make that happen, and it is just beautiful. So, if you haven't had a chance to go over and take a look at it, I would encourage you to. They had some great speakers. And in particular, I think Karina really nailed it today with her. She was a keynote speaker and did a great job. But it was a great, great event, good for West Salem. And again, I would encourage everybody to go over and take a look at that. It's beautiful.
I would just add, I went to the Marion Polk Food Share Chef's Night Out event. And though it wasn't a school district event, our culinary students were there from South, North, and McNary. And the food that they were making was exceptional, every bit on par with the restaurants that were there. And those kids were really proud of the work they were doing and really beamed when I complimented them on the taste of their food. So, if you get a chance to go to any events that are catered by those kids, you won't be sorry. They're really doing a great job. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's comments.
I have a long list, because I knew you'd take some of my comments. So, the Memorial Garden dedication today was wonderful. I'd like to just make a mention of a student at South High School who did a reach-out to me from the student newspaper, Cheyenne Ward. And she sends me an email, "Could I write a story about you for the South Highland... Or South High School paper?" And so, I said, "Sure." Her biggest excitement was that I emailed back in two hours. And she thought that was a pretty big deal. But they... The newspaper at South High School did such a nice job of being sure that the student was well-prepped. She had good questions. She greeted me at the door, made sure I signed in, gave me a visitor's badge. I reminded her I had one. I haven't seen the article yet, but it was just really a tribute to our students. So, and especially to Cheyenne, who did that reach-out to me to do that. So, I just wanted to comment on that. Also, it's been about two weeks now where I went to the CTE ribbon-cutting ceremony for the residential building program. They were doing the groundbreaking for their house. ConTech is a nonprofit in our community, set up just to support our residential building program. So, any money that comes in, any donations, when they sell the house, it will go into that nonprofit to support the next house. So, it's another great example of a public-private partnership. And I was particularly struck by the contractor, who is giving up his time to help our students build this house. And if you know contractors, it's pretty busy. And to be able to divert his attention from his business to really take all kinds of extra time with our student, you know, excavating should take one day. It takes two weeks with students. So, he is really giving a lot to that program. Our plan is that we will pick up that residential building program and put it into the Career and Technical Center next year. So, that's just something to look forward to, and we'll have some highlights. I have... I should have a video coming from McNary High School, who did a video production of that event. And when I see that, I'll send it out to you, just so you can see it. It's a great thing. The other thing is, I counted up, I've visited 27 schools since July 1. I know I'm not even halfway there, but I have visited 27 schools. I'm also a rotarian now with the downtown Rotary Club, and I'm making a commitment that I will get to every Rotary Club in Salem before Christmas. So, we're beginning to try to get those onto my calendar. And I'll get back to Kaiser. I've been to Kaiser twice already. And then, just a note about Kaiser in particular, I'm going to go to the city council meeting on Monday night, and I'll introduce our new McNary principal, Eric Jespersen, to the Kaiser City Council. But I've also committed to the Kaiser City Council that I'll do a reach-out in that community with them at least a couple, two to three times a year. And we're beginning some kind of unique partnerships with the police department in Kaiser as well. So, that's some first steps with Kaiser. And I'm looking forward to their city council meeting on Monday night. So, that's my longer list that I shortened for you.
Great. I think if there's nothing else, we will adjourn.
And Salam has to come back for another meeting. It was great to do that in business meeting.